To order the October 4th meeting of the Planning Commission, welcome all of you. Ms. France, would you like to do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Present.
Commissioner Monette?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
As absent.
Vice Chair Koberstein? Chair Kistner?
Here.
This is public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the Commission may not engage in discussion or take action on any matters not described on the agenda. Please oblige the time limit of three minutes. Any public comment?
Thank you very much. I'd like to give you a handout and just address you shortly about the Committee on Foreign Investment in the U.S. And I'll come up, I'm heading that way.
About the Committee on Foreign Investment in the U.S.
Would you identify yourself, please?
Yes. Lois Batuello, 1634 Main Street, St. Helena. And that's on the handout. We have a function at the executive branch of our government that is housed within our U.S. Treasury Department, but it's a pooling together of about half of the government's National Security Council. This group of people who include the Director of National Intelligence, the Attorney General, Secretary of the Treasury, Secretary of Homeland Security, will review all matters of foreign investment in the United States. And that applies to us at the local level. And so, in this county, I've been active in working with county government to see that projects that are controlled by foreign nationals are properly reviewed. And in the process, we've had to work out arrangements to disengage Four Seasons Resorts and Hotels from development in Napa County. Okay, so there is a list here of my projects and my work. And that's in conjunction with my work for the United States Senate for 22 years. So in 2002, Four Seasons was removed as a planned future owners of the Carnaros Inn project by the Plump Jack co-investors. Okay, by 2008, they were removed from the Napa Pipe project by their co-investors, Napa Redevelopment Partners. Their Lake Luciana project in conjunction with Aetna Springs was rejected by the Board of Supervisors in 2010. And by 2009, the Echo Village project collapsed in Angwin. In addition, there had been a plan by PUC to sell Angwin Airport to Four Seasons Resorts and Hotels, so that was scuttled when PUC was alerted and didn't execute a sale of the airport. Okay. In the latter two projects, Pope Valley and in Angwin, there was a common developer who represented the interests of Four Seasons Resorts and Hotels. We had Bald Mountain Development in Calistoga. We had the same prints involved on several occasions to try to get developments going in Calistoga. His first involved the glider port, and that vaporized. But then in came Bald Mountain Development. And unfortunately, while the Planning Commission declined that project for security reasons, they were reversed by the City Council. So in has come CFIUS. So what we see now as the Silver Rose Project has for six years been a pile of dirt being shoved from one end of the property to the other, an excavation for a pond. And we don't know what's going to happen with the property. You know, it probably will develop, but under different ownership. So I want to thank you for your time, and I want to ask you to go ahead and take your time reading this. But I'm hoping that maybe City Attorney, you'll look at some in-house possibilities of going up online to read more about CFIUS and understand how you can file online whenever you have a foreign national involved in a project. Thank you. And, public, anybody want some?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mary, you can leave a sign at my house if you want, 1634 Main Street.
Is there any other public comment? Closing public comment? The next item is a consent item. Members of the Commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless this is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. Anyone wish to pull anything?
I just want to make sure that people who are here realize that we will just approve this as a consent item the way it's presented.
Which, okay, the consent item is just the approval of the minutes, correct? That's what's on my record.
Yeah, I didn't know if people were here to actually talk about this, or...
About the minutes?
No.
Because the minutes are the only thing on the consent island calendar.
Okay.
You were thinking item six. I hear you, yeah.
I always have trouble reading these. It always, it looks to me like when we get to scheduled matters that we are...
So public hearings just get right, yeah.
People are really into our minutes.
No, that is confusing.
Very controversial.
Been a busy day.
Chock full of...
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items, please? Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Koberstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Obstain.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Next item is public hearing, item number five. It's a demolition permit and design review for 1695 Chardonnay Way.
Yes, thank you Chair Kistner. As you may recall, this item has been before the Commission on two previous occasions and was continued both times for redesigns. Since the last meeting on August 2nd, the applicant has redesigned the home yet again, this time eliminating the second unit, removing the loft component of the design and reducing the overall height of the home by three feet. Therefore, the project as proposed no longer has the second-story, second unit, or loft, which were the points of contention before. The applicant is seeking demolition permit and design review approval to demolish the existing home in order to construct a new 2,927-square-foot, single-story, single-family residence with a 277-square-foot attached garage. The new home would be finished with stuck-over ICF block walls, which is much more energy-efficient than traditional wood framing. All roofing would be standing seam galvanized metal. Windows and doors would be constructed of recessed wood with metal cladding. The height of the proposed single-story home is approximately 18 feet 6 inches to the top of ridge, which is only 2 and 1/2 feet taller than the existing one-story home. The parcel has a maximum floor area ratio of .302 for a maximum gross floor area of 3,287 square feet, excluding any applicable FAR exemptions. And with the 200-square-foot FAR exemption for covered parking, the project will consist of 3,004 square feet, which is 283 square feet, less than the maximum square foot is permitted for a FAR of .276. The project as proposed meets all the requirements of the low-density zone, including lot coverage, building size, height, setbacks, etc. And staff has received no comments on the project since the last redesign. For these reasons, staff recommends that the Planning Commission accept the required findings and approve the demolition permit and design review to allow for the new single-family home at 1695 Chardonnay Way. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions, staff? Public comment? Any public comment?
Hello, I'm Tiny Boak. I live at 1690 Chardonnay Way, right across the street from 1695. And I understand that there's been changes in the plans, and the roof's been lowered and all that. But my husband and I are not happy with it because it cuts our view of the eastern hills. And all we're going to see is the top of a house now. And I just wanted to share that with everybody. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the Commission and staff. My name is Donna Oldford. I'm here as a resident of St. Helena tonight, a resident of Sylvaner. And I wanted to report that we did meet twice with Mr. Schoenfeld about the redesign of the home. Our goal was really to make sure that the home fit within the parameters of our CCNRs, the ones that we have lived with for 30 and sometimes, some of us, 40 years. And he very graciously has entertained our thoughts about this and our reasons for wanting the CCNRs to prevail. And we feel that the changes that he has made, eliminating the second unit and the loft as a second story and redesigning the windows so it had less an appearance of a second story, we feel that that does comply with our CCNRs. I am here speaking for myself tonight. I can also report that several of the neighbors that were speaking at the first hearing and who were involved in meetings with Mr. Schoenfeld are in agreement that this represents a much better plan relative to those covenants, conditions, and restrictions. I just want to say one more thing that I know some may disagree with this. I have to commend Mr. Schoenfeld because he worked very conscientiously with us. And I think this does represent a win-win. I think that we're generally happy and I understand your concern, I do. But we have some limitations as to what we can reasonably do in the way of design review with these CCNRs. We, as a group, and even as individuals, however, do feel very strongly that these CCNRs are in place, they are legally enforceable document, and that we will continue to review applications. And hopefully, you know, everybody who buys a home in Sylvaner has to sign off on these CCNRs. And I think the staff is well aware of what this represents. I know one of our owners, one of my neighbors, wanted to build a second story. And she was told by the city staff, different staff at the time, but she was told, "You can't do it because of these CCNRs." So I just want to go on record as saying we do feel strongly about this. We will continue to do whatever we can to protect the character of our neighborhood and the intent that was expressed through those CCNRs. Thank you for your patience, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schoenfeld, I owe you an apology. Is there anything that you'd like to say I should ask you first, as the applicant? You're fine, sir. Thank you. Any more comments? Close public comment? Oh, okay.
My name's Tracy Scupney from 1961 Vineyard Avenue. And we have a success story for CCNRs too. And I'd like to take a moment to keep it on public record that some of you were here with us in 2009 for the cul-de-sac of Vineyard Avenue. A home in question was 1969, our next-door neighbor. And I would say thank you too for upholding our CCNR for no second floor or stories in our little subdivision. And that it is really important, I just have to echo your statement, because we were successful in '09, and it was so rewarding because we had, I think, we calculated 95% of our neighbors, there were probably 30 homes in our subdivision, all but one signed in agreement to supporting the CCNRs, and so it was meaningful to us. The 19 late 50s and early 60s viewscape was being preserved with the CCNRs specifically to keep the hills in view for everyone. I'm sorry for your loss too, because we feared for it ourselves. And we have a lot of subdivisions in our town that have not been remade into larger, bigger homes. Cronella, I know, is still unblemished in a sense, if that's a way to put it. But they were important to us as neighbors. And I came just to watch, and I'm so happy to hear, thank you very much for really caring and listening to what neighbors were saying. So that, I appreciate it. And thank you for always listening to public statements. So, just for the record, there I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will close public comment. Tracy, would you like to start?
Sure. So first of all, I want to thank the applicant for making the changes and meeting with the neighbors. That was what was very important. Just to reiterate, I think what our attorney said is unfortunately with the CCNRs, it's not something that we can manage to. But we do encourage and are happy to see that as a group you work together and that the applicant was willing to work with you. But that is just for the record, not something that we can make our decisions based on. And then, the other piece that's important to me is that we need to remind people that views are important, but they aren't something that we can protect. It is, you know, up to you to work with the neighbors and work with applicants coming in. In this case, it doesn't sound like it could be worked about, worked out for everyone. And that's unfortunate, but it, again, is something that we can't get involved with. Other than that, though, I'm happy to see that for the most part, it sounds like everyone is pleased with the outcome. And that it sounds like it'll be a good project moving forward, so I can support it.
I agree with Tracy, but one thing I would like to address about the CCNRs, although we are not a body to enforce them, I think where they have been pretty much uniformly observed, as in this case, they do establish the character of the immediate neighborhood, which is one of the criteria that we take into account under design review. And this is a vast improvement over the original design, which was a great departure from the character of the immediate area. So I, it's unfortunate that all these meetings with the neighbors didn't occur earlier in the process. And I would just encourage the staff to encourage that kind of dialogue early on.
Well, I don't disagree with anyone. Well, I guess I do somewhat. But, you know, I really want to appreciate the cooperation and the changes that the applicant made and reaching out to the neighbors. But I still feel that the character of the neighborhood is for homes that do not reach the maximum FAR or close to the maximum FAR possible. And I just remember so many meetings and town hall meetings and votes and so forth. It just seems to me that most of the residents that participated in those activities wanted to keep the character of the town, of the small town, as reflected in smaller homes on lots rather than going to the maximum. And so, I still cannot find for, I can't accept the findings two, three, and six. I would like to see a smaller home with larger setbacks and designed so that no one loses their views. I know that Commissioner Sweeney is correct, that views are not considered at this time something that we can protect. But I certainly hope that that will change, that we can change that and will in the future. Because, and even if it's not in our ordinances, I think, just out of respect when anyone is making any changes, that views are very, very important to quality of life and character of a town. So I would support it with, if it were smaller, but it's still too big for my, for me to say that it fits in with the character savanna. I think even in the staff report, it is mentioned that the FARs for most of the houses in that area are smaller. I mean, you know, that the, however you express that. So anyway, that's my feeling of this part. I really appreciate the changes that were made, but I can't support it with the current size because I just want to be a vote to maintain that character in this town that we're not going to build out to the maximum FAR.
Well, Bobby, that was very passionate. I understand where you're coming from, but I'm in support of this project. I am very happy that there was a compromise made. And I think that asking for more of a compromise is, might be asking for too much, especially because it is within the design review elements and requirements. I also did want to say thank you for cleaning up the front yard after the meeting. I did notice that. Just wanted to put that on the record, that that was appreciated. And for future projects, to tell them to keep the yards clean, it does make it a little bit nicer. But yeah, I'm in support of the project for the reasons of Commissioner Koberstein and Commissioner Sweeney.
You guys didn't leave me much to say. I am in support of the project, and I certainly appreciate your efforts. I appreciate the neighbors' meeting with him. I think that's the kind of cooperation we need in town. So I'm ready to hear a motion.
I move that we determine this project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to Section 15301, which exempts demolition of existing structures, and Section 15303, which exempts the construction of conversion of small structures, including single-family residences, garages, pools, etc. And we accept the finding, the required findings, and approve the demolition permit and design review to allow for a new single-family home at 1695 Chardonnay Way.
Your second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Koberstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
No.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Schoenfeld.
Next item is scheduled matters. This is a review for accuracy and the update summary of the Planning Commission's direction on the April 2016 general plan as presented by the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission at the July 19, 2016, and amended by the Planning Commission at the August 2nd, 2016 Planning Commission meetings.
Thank you Chair Kistner, members of the Commission. As you mentioned, item six before you tonight is a review of the Planning Commission's direction regarding the general plan recommendations as summarized by the Chair and the Vice Chair in a summary presented on August, I'm sorry, July 19. This is the seventh general plan study session held on the general plan by the Planning Commission since April of this year. And on July 19, the Chair and the Vice Chair presented a summary of the Planning Commission's comments and direction intended to be provided to the City Council in their review of the general plan, compiled from the previous four meetings and in an effort to supplement and clarify the summary that had been provided by the staff at that same meeting. The Commission spent a majority of the July 19 study session reviewing and discussing the summary, essentially trying to come to some consensus over each of the issues or the points, the recommendations. And after a discussion, the Commission directed staff to insert various edits and changes and bring that back for review for accuracy by the Commission. Staff brought that document back on August 2nd, and the Commission reviewed those comments, finding just very few edits to make and asked staff to make those and bring it back for a final review. So attached to the staff report is a copy of the summary of the Planning Commission's direction concerning the general plan. And again, this is intended to be provided to the City Council in their review of the general plan with edits made by staff incorporating the Commission's comments and direction provided on August 2nd. These are identified in red text. Excuse me. Red text in the document, and generally the edits are essentially minor text modifications. However, language regarding ES-1 and ES-2 was directed to be removed from the summary by the Commission, and that has been done. The Commission was struggling with achieving a consensus on that direction. And then also, staff made a minor revision to implementing action ES-1F to provide clarity and greater flexibility in the provision of workforce housing. So please be sure to review that to ensure that it's meeting the intent of the direction. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the attached summary and provide direction to staff to ensure that this captures the intent of the... to ensure that this captures the intent of the direction from the commission to the City Council for their review of the general plan. Available for questions if there are any.
Any questions for staff? Any public comment?
Good evening. Pam Simpson, San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. I had to borrow your book, sorry, because I did print out the hundred and ten pages. I thought I would save a tree tonight and just, so I'm borrowing your book real quickly. I'm just here for a little bit of clarification. I'm looking at chapter three on the economic sustainability element, and obviously, section A where you're talking about the citizens' voice comments on tourism. From what I remember back in April, the consensus of the Planning Commission was that the, the Planning Commission did, saw this as sort of a policy that should just be reviewed by the City Council, and that there wasn't really, it wasn't appropriate for you to be wordsmithing it, or that you should make any changes to the citizens' voice recommendations on that because it was policy. And it seems here that the wording that it says is it's a red line presented May seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. It warrants consideration, that the City Council should evaluate this. And from what I remember, you were just sort of kicking it up to City Council, that you weren't necessarily saying that it warranted any consideration, or that it, that you were making any kind of decision about it, whether positive or negative. You were just staying neutral on it. And the way this reads, it sounds like you're telling them to consider it. And so I just want, I am, chapter three, economic sustainability, A.
Okay, chapter, I got it.
There's no page, there's no page numbers on this, sorry.
We sure could be, okay.
So I could read the whole thing, but I don't have my glasses on, so I might stumble over it. It's the consensus of the Planning Commission that the comments in the citizens' voice letter dated April fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, as redlined in materials presented May seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, warrant consideration, and that the City Council should evaluate them with respect to specific wording changes. So it sounds like you're endorsing that. And I just want further clarification, if you're actually endorsing that citizens' voice letter, or if you're just staying neutral. And I think that the wording on this should reflect your true intentions, because I don't think we want City Council misinformed or believing that, that you made some sort of agreement to what that citizens' voice letter was about.
My recollection is that we decided not to make any recommendations.
Right.
But we did. Oh, excuse me.
Oh. That's it. I just, like I said, I just was hoping for clarification, and I'm not, not necessarily happy with warrants consideration. I think that that sort of implies that you are recommending the citizens' voice letter be considered. And it's, you know, it's policy, what I remember you saying, that because it's policy, it wasn't in your, in your purview to do that. So you just said, we're just going to let the council take the letter and they can consider it, but you had no, no position on it. Thank you.
Anyway, that's what, I remember that, we didn't want to make any recommendations.
Bobby, it's a public comment right now.
Oh, still, I'm sorry. Sorry. Here, I'll turn.
Make your comments when they're through.
Hi, Vicki Bradshaw. I'm a resident of San Antonio. The only thing I ask is that the Planning Commission reserve making any final decisions as to language until after we get back the comments on responses to public comments, since you would be making a premature without having all the information. That's the only thing I ask. And I would like to make a comment on the issue of CCNRs, since that was an issue that we raised in our public comments. And it seems while the city takes the position that they aren't bound by the CCNRs, they should actually be taking an aggressive position against them if in fact they prevent affordable housing in multiple parts of the city. Housing Element two point six says that the city will do affordable housing throughout the city. And if you're forbidding second unit, second stories and second units, that limits the number of areas where affordable housing can go in, or multifamily rental. And right now, ninety-eight point two percent of all multifamily low, low-income and affordable housing is on the west, on the east side of the city, primarily from Montavista, the Napa River, and including McCorkle. And if we continue to allow such things as CCNRs to limit the availability of affordable housing in all parts of the city, it only continues the discrimination that's in effect at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? A closed public comment. All right, Bobby, you can start.
Well, okay, I can just repeat what I said. I recall that we were clear, that we did not want to make any recommendations. And I can see that the word warranted suggests that there may have been some things that weren't warranted. But, you know, if, I can see, you know, that there were some things that we found warranted to be, to go on, and some things that we didn't. I mean, I'm inferring from what was said by Pam, that that's, that's her objection to the word. But as I recall, we were being neutral. We had decided simply to send it on. And because, you know, and that, that we decided that it was because of the, you know, the organization of the comments and the, a number of people who had been promoting the contents of what we were sending on, that it was important to do that. And actually, I'd been, I think we had been asked to send it on to directly. So I don't know. Do you guys remember anything different? I don't see that warranted is any, it is a value judgment, I suppose, because it implies that maybe something wouldn't warrant being sent on. So I don't, I don't have a problem with removing that word, but I.
Yeah, I recall it just being a neutral statement. They wanted to be heard, and we were going to be a stopping block. Once we started trying to wordsmith things, it was being counterproductive, and it was irrelevant because we weren't at a point to be rewriting the general plan.
And they didn't want us to wordsmith.
They requested that.
So if the word warranted is problematic, can we just say? Pass it on? I mean, what other word can we say? They agreed per the writers of the citizens' voice letters.
I would say that the comments in the citizens' voice letter dated on April fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen.
Or passed on in their entirety.
Should be evaluated by the City Council in respect with, just kind of cut it out.
Well, it should be, is again.
Or just passed on in their entirety for the City Council's, you know.
At the request of citizen, you know, at the request of citizens' voice.
We didn't edit it, we just passed on the letter, which they sent directly to the council anyway.
And it was at their request, so we could say at their request.
I think we're stumbling over ourselves here. I mean, to me, warrant consideration means essentially the same thing as you should evaluate them, you know. So I don't, I don't really.
Or we can keep, we can keep warranted and put in the comments saying, we don't have an opinion on it.
I just think we should say, because, I mean, if we do say you should evaluate, that's, they might not want to. I mean, we're not in.
So then why are we even saying that?
Well, we shouldn't. We should just say it was at the request of citizens' voice. This was forwarded to the City Council for their consideration.
It does say that, Bobby.
You know, I don't know that that's an accurate description of the history, because we, we did get into it a lot. And we've, we've, we discussed a lot of potential changes. And then it was only later on, when another set of staff changes came back, that citizens' voice said, let's just move on to the council. So I sort of thought we did think that they warranted consideration, but I'm not going to make a big deal out of it.
We did, but I think.
Because as far as I'm concerned, telling the council that they should evaluate them is essentially the same thing.
I don't think we should tell them they should evaluate it either, because that's making a recommendation. And if we're not supposed to recommend, I mean, all we're doing in this case, at the request of those, of citizens' voice, is passing this stuff on to the council. They can decide.
Then we're doing nothing, because it would have been passed on anyway as part of the staff report.
I know, I mean, that's what.
Can we just put in the notes that we didn't have a strong objection, or positive or negative to this?
Staff is happy to modify the document to make the recommendation neutral on this comment.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Great.
Any other changes? Sorry.
Well, from the public.
Go ahead. You have the microphone.
Is it still public comment?
No, we closed it.
I closed public comment, or you wouldn't have been talking.
Well, there's other things that they added.
You have anything else, Bobby?
Yeah, I've got some stuff, but I don't know. I don't need to go first. Is there other?
You're go, you're primed, you're ready to go.
All right, so, let's see. On the, okay, under E, on that same page that we were just looking, just before chapter three, there is E, which I guess comes after whatever, two, on the page before. It says, "If the low-medium density land use designation is adopted in the plan to avoid concentration of such housing in limited areas of the city, this policy should be removed or modified to include the low-medium density district as," I mean, it just ends there, and the, what's the meaning? As a potential site for higher-density housing? Is that, is that what we're supposed to be including the four? It doesn't make sense, feels like it just jumped off a cliff, and that.
Because you can't take it in its, you're taking it out of context here. It's referencing that actual policy in the general plan.
Well, okay, it's a policy.
Also saying that we end up having that new low-medium density. I'll repeat that. The reason this seems out of context is these are just notes relevant to policy LUC two point six, or LU two point six. And all this is saying is if in fact that new designation is adopted, then you have to include it in that policy. Otherwise, it won't be included, because it's not there now. I think that was the point.
What? But it says the policy should be removed or modified to include the low-medium density district.
Right, because it can't be excluded. It would be a new, it would be a net new designation, and you couldn't exclude it there.
Right now, that policy does not reference low-medium density. So if that, if the council, what this is saying is if the council chooses to adopt the version of the plan that incorporates that new designation, this policy should be expanded to also include that new designation.
I got it, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, these are just comments relative to other larger documents.
Okay. Okay. So then that, and then under D on the next page. I don't, I don't see why we cross out elsewhere in the city. I think, it says in medium-density or high-density residential districts. I just think in the, elsewhere in the city is, includes, such incentive shall include visitor services in. So what is it saying? So in lieu, in lieu fee to develop housing in medium-density residential or higher-density residential districts. But, medium-density residential, higher-density, but it could include housing in low-medium density residential districts.
How about we let Noah's?
Well, I haven't finished answering, asking my question. Since it could include low residential, it could include this in low, medium-low, why don't we just say elsewhere in the city, because it may include that?
The elsewhere in the city language was deleted, so that way the workforce housing may be able to be accommodated on the project site itself. So that says, "Provide development incentives for new visitor-serving businesses." So a new business to develop affordable and workforce housing, so a new business that's coming to town, we want to provide them incentives to develop workforce housing and affordable, "through construction of housing or payment of appropriate in lieu fee." And then if you say elsewhere in the city, it means not on the project site. So the idea is.
Well, then you could just say to develop housing on project site or elsewhere in the city, rather than determine, okay, go ahead.
So the idea was to allow it, the flexibility to allow it on the project site or in other districts. So if the concern is that the, the policy should be expanded to also allow it in the low-density district.
In case that means.
That's fine, but you obviously would get less units out of, so I think the idea was to accommodate them in areas where you could actually provide a larger number of units.
Well, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that, it should be, I think all possible affordable housing, not just the ones that could be in the larger ones, the ones that could be small, second units, whatever, duplexes, whatever. I think, I don't think this excludes that, and I think it would, if you just said to develop housing onsite or elsewhere in the city, that would include everything, because we're going to have a comprehensive rezoning after, you know, in, in the next few months or whenever. So we don't even know, you know, why, why specify medium-density or higher-density? I think, I think that's, might have to be changed in the future. Why not just say other?
I agree with Bobby. First of all, we have to put onsite, I think, back in there, because that's one possibility. And, you know, we may have a mixed-use district, we may have other districts, and I don't think we want to limit where the housing can go by specifying just those two zoning districts. So, I mean, we were originally trying to just clean this up, because it made it look as though you could develop the project itself in those two districts. I think her change makes more sense.
So as, as is recommended by Commissioner Monette and Commissioner Koberstein, the language would read, "Provide development incentives for new visitor-serving businesses to develop affordable and workforce housing, either through construction of housing or payment of an appropriate in lieu fee, to develop housing onsite or elsewhere in the city."
That seems reasonable right now. We want to, yeah.
And exactly like Commissioner Koberstein says, the comment on the, on the following page references why the change was made originally, because there was concern over the, the projects supporting development in residential areas.
No other changes?
No, that's all I have.
Would you like to speak?
I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. You have no comments?
No, I, I mean, if we want to talk about the, there was the acknowledging of tourism brings to city any potential benefits. But other than that, the winery, the red line and all that, those additions, that is how I remember the conversation going. I told you, you were going to have more, Bobby. And then this, I'm also fine with the crossing out of the non-chain and just support and for allowing businesses in the city. But if we want to talk about acknowledging tourism and benefits, it's kind of open-ended.
Tracy?
I had, I had one other thing. Should I wait until the end? Is that okay, Tracy? I'm sorry, I missed, okay, under managing tourism, under D, wineries. And this is, I'm just, just because of letters we've been getting recently, and, and this issue has been up a lot in the last year or so, where it says in the first sentence, "Permit wineries and other agricultural-related industries to locate in the city if their location does not adversely impact surrounding uses or city services." And then it gives two examples, water, comma, traffic, comma, et cetera. I would just ask to distinct, to delineate noise, so it would read water, comma, traffic, comma, noise, et cetera. I really think it's important to have it spelled out here because of, because it's, it's one of, I think those are the three big things about development, water, traffic, noise. So I, I don't know if you guys agree, but I thought I would ask you if you would support me on, on adding that word.
Why would wineries be any different? We already have a noise ordinance in the city.
We have water ordinance, we have all kinds of ordinance, but we mention water, traffic. I would just like to get noise there, because I think it's a basic.
But these are uses of city services.
But it's a basic impact, and that noise is one of the basic impacts of the, of that kind of development. That kind of service.
Although I'm reading this to say adversely impacts surrounding uses or city services, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I, I think you're opening a whole new conversation, which I wouldn't support.
What does that mean, surrounding uses?
Well, I think since this is in city, this is not in residential areas.
In cities?
Yeah, it says in the city.
Right, but, okay.
Surrounding uses of.
Agricultural-related industries, okay. Too low-key.
Retail use, used to be a.
Okay, that, that makes sense. I can, I can live with.
Right, check that one off the list.
I have a couple of things. And I guess we're lacking page numbers. The page we were just discussing, the citizens' voice, above it, we have this section E, which was called placeholder. And we put it there because we had those comments about the agricultural district. And I have to go back and review the tape, but my recollection is that we made at least one more specific comment in response to that Our Town letter that we had. Did we not?
Is this more recently? Because I was thinking after I.
This was like in July, maybe.
Okay, I'd have to go back and review the tape. I was thinking that this summary does not capture the most recent Planning Commission discussion, which did include Our Town, Our Town's letter from June. So that, I, I recognize after I put the packet together that, oh, they maybe could have done that. This is a placeholder. This is a placeholder for that. So I can review the tapes from July to ensure that any comments made at that time are brought forward, and then also the most recent.
Yeah, they had some specific comments, remember, about, uh, uh, just because something was planted in vines.
Agricultural uses versus agricultural designations, yes.
So, which also brings up another point, in response to what Vicky raised. This is still a work in progress, that's not going anywhere till we finish, right?
Yeah, so, so the idea is that this gives staff essentially the direction to finalize the general plan draft, along with all of the recommendations received from the planning commission, and then to be brought back before you for final review and recommendation onto the city council.
So I would, I would include the Our Town comments in this.
So the final review will include the, the responses to the comments, is that accurate?
To the EIR comments?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
You know what, what is the timing around that?
Unfortunately, I don't have a good answer for that. We, as I've mentioned previously, we received a significant number of comments. Frankly, I'm anticipating having to reissue the EIR.
Right.
So that will trigger another forty-five day review and comment period, and then subsequent new response to comments being put together, and then brought back before the commission. So we're undertaking basically revisions to the EIR based on the comments that we received, that identified some areas where it was lacking. We're gonna get those changes made, we're doing that in-house, and then we will reissue for another forty-five day comment period. I know the document will not come back before the commission in 2016, unfortunately. I cannot comment on the timing of the issuance of the EIR for the public review.
So it's now the 2017 plan, maybe?
No, maybe.
I have one other comment, and it's on, under chapter two, section B, when we talk about the comprehensive zoning review. Under the commentary, we talk about receiving other comments about other districts. And we have specifically referenced the one George David letter. I would like to specifically reference the two other instances where people came to us and made specific comments about the zoning in their neighborhood, one of them being the north side of McCorkle, and the other one being Montevista. I think they're sort of of equal importance with the other comments, and I wouldn't want them to seem like they're not, but.
So these are written comments that have been received on the general plan?
In the case of McCorkle, I don't know that we ever got written comments. I can recall at least two, possibly three people testifying about it during our-
There were written comments.
There were written comments? If, if there were written comments, then I think we should, you know, instead of referencing at the end just George David's comments, July nineteenth, I would like to include the specific comments we got for those other two areas, if everybody else agrees.
I agree. Yeah, is there anyone else?
So can I understand what, what we're, what that, your question is? We're just want, are you just wanting to document that we heard and listened to? Or, because if we do that, we, we have comments, I mean, they're all part of public, public record. It would, to go back and include everything, I mean, it's almost to the point, we shouldn't, we should, to pick in which ones we want and which ones we don't want, again, there's, there's more than just those three letters.
But that's what we're doing.
Three dozens of comments.
I think those three are the only instances where we were specifically discussing or being asked to look at situations where the zoning did not match in people's minds what ought to be done on the property. I mean, the first major one was the low-medium district. And then along came the north side of McCorkle, and then Montevista. I don't recall anybody else coming in here and saying, "My area's not properly zoned."
And we're picking and, we're picking and choosing by just mentioning those two.
You can say, for example.
Yeah.
No, why not just list them all? That's all of them.
Say what?
She's saying that that's all of them, so.
All of what?
All of the, all of the, all of the people who came in, that, that would cover all of it. The, the Citizens Voice, George David.
I don't think Citizens Voice was talking about comprehensive zoning. I'm just talking about this one issue where we-
Oh, you're not talking about the attachments, oh.
No, 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 no.
Where are you?
I'm talking about the one, the one issue under chapter two, paragraph B, when we're recommending the comprehensive zoning review.
Okay, I got you.
And in the commentary there.
Okay.
We said we received comments directed towards regulations in residential districts, other than the medium-density. And I'm just asking if we can specifically reference these other two in addition to the George David letter.
I think that's important, I think we should. There's another place where.
So staff wasn't anticipating the, the format of the commission review to, to call out each individual comment? Staff's imagining that this, the commission's final review of the, of the document will, and the recommendation made to the city council will not be in this similar context. So this is, this commentary is allowing the commission to understand the process throughout, but what staff's imagining bringing forward to the commission for their review will be the finalized document, a summary of all of the recommendations from the commission, all of the comments received attached to the staff report, and an analysis of the process, the recent process for the general plan update. So I'm happy to, to reference those letters, and maybe put them into this document as another attachment to the staff report, but, but, it, it may be a more appropriate way to, rather than reference one, just say generally, we received a number of comments on rezoning, and we are in support or not of each individual recommendation or request.
Yeah, maybe I'm not understanding you. Is this piece, as we've written it, going to go to the council?
It, it can, but it's, I, I was imagining, staff was imagining that this would be an attachment to the staff report, which, which analyzes the general plan, talks about all the process the commission went through, and summarizes the recommendations. So the individual recommendations are captured here. The comments are kind of more background as to how we got there.
I think the comments are essential to people understanding our thinking. I mean, I would like this to be something, sort of a standalone recommendation of the commission. That's just my view of why we were even going through the exercise.
But we don't have a, can I just add to that, though? We don't have the final version of the general plan. So all we're commenting on, which, this kind of got, this letter got a life of its own, which is fine, but, I mean, basically, this was, if I recall, back whenever this conversation started, when you and Grace sat together and went through the tapes, and on your own, sort of said, okay, this is what we talked about. And then because it wasn't exactly as all of us remembered, we went through and say, wait, if that's, letter's gonna speak for all of us, we now need to go through and make sure we all come to consensus on it. If it was just a letter from you and Grace saying, this is what we remember, but there be, might be different things, read the tapes, then that would be fine, but because it became sort of a document that was supposed to speak unanimously for the commission, we've gone through all this, but at the end of the day, we're not even in this year going to see the final general plan draft, so we're gonna be doing all this again. So I think to continue to add and, and, and wordsmith a letter that's really just one of many documents going in, this all hap, could, this all happens again, once the general plan in its format from the council and the EIR, right? I mean, so this is just an exercise.
I don't think we're wordsmithing it, Adam, we're supposed to be reviewing.
We're wordsmithing a letter that, an internal document, we're, we're, we're creating a lot of conver- This is a letter, again, that was started, which is great, but, but on their own, Mary and, and Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chairperson Park, uh, Kissner, and Commissioner Koberstein, in an effort to organize thoughts, wrote a letter on behalf of all of us, and then presented it to us, and myself, and a few others said, whoa, that's not exactly what we remember, so if this is going to represent all of us, then we now have to go through all of it. So, again, it's not the final document that says, this is what we want you to do. That's gonna have to happen after we're presented the version, so, the final version, so.
And the only, the only concern that's being identified by staff is we're, we have received a significant number of comments on the EIR when it was posted, and we're going to receive a significant number more when the EIR is reposted. So it's kind of, where do you draw the line in referencing?
Well, I think one of the reasons we did this was because we were having so many study sessions, we were starting to lose track of what we had reviewed and why we were making certain recommendations. And I certainly realized there's another round to go. But I was just asking to insert these two things, so we don't completely forget about them two months from now, you know, I, I realize this is a work in, in progress. I'm fine if we just want to say, see also comments of Our Town and, and the McCorkle group.
Or just all review public comments from the, the planning commission during your evaluation? I mean, that's really what we're saying, is that.
Why do you have George David's name in there? I mean, that's, if you're gonna have one, you should have them all, if you don't want, if you don't want them all, do none.
Noah, where, where would, where would you include the, the, the McCorkle and the comments by Our, or by Mary Stevenson?
So those will all be attachments to the staff report, and then how staff would prefer it is if the commission is-
Can I interrupt, one second, can you clarify, when you talk about the staff report, just for the record, can you tell them what staff report that will be?
This would be the staff report summarizing the general plan process to date, and then also the recommendations from the planning commission onto the city council, so the-
But this is the city council's staff report, correct?
Uh, well, the planning commission's staff report that identifies all the comments that we've received and, and the summary direction from the planning commission, and then that, in theory, would be essentially forwarded on with a city council staff report that provides the direction from the commission as to the recommendation, recommended changes to the general plan.
Why do you say see in particular George David? Why did you say that?
This isn't written by staff.
He didn't, he, these guys do.
This is written by-
I'll tell you why, we put that in, because at that point, we had a specific proposal about looking at the zoning in the downtown area in particular. It was one of the, the instances where somebody specifically raised a zoning comment. And since that, we had, well, during that, we had the McCorkle, and we've also had the Montevista.
This is from, from staff's perspective, we, we would rather have the commission's recommendations be, you know, analyze zoning designations on North McCorkle versus review comment letter from ex-group recommending-
I'm happy to say that, but, you know, I thought people were tending away from that.
So, so that, so staff's trying to get to a recommendation from the commission to the city council regarding any additional changes that are needed in the general plan. That recommendation will be informed by the comment letters received through this process. Obviously, not every commissioner, or there may not be consensus from the commission on, on which elements to be supported of each of those comment letters, but that's what we're trying to get to with this document. But the concern is just, if you keep referencing specific letters rather than actually what you're trying to do, it gets more lost in the weeds, or you have to go back through all the attachments to figure out.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
And just for my own, because again, this has come up multiple times, the genesis of this comment altogether was really the potential insertion late in the game of the medium-density new designation. And really, what we were, you, we ultimately agreed with was, it's too late in the game, do not include that in the general plan, for a whole host of reasons, not, the least of which is a lot of feedback from the community that they don't want it right now, that it's, it's too late in the game, they don't have time to think about it. Kind of period.
I think that's A, I think that's section A. Section B is a section that I think Bobby first brought up when we had finished making the recommendation on the low-medium, that, you know, even if, if the council doesn't follow what we're saying in A, we need to do what's in B.
Which is review all the zones.
Which is review all the zones, that's also a recommendation. And it's fine with me if we take out the specific reference to the George David letter, or the Montevista letter, or the McCorkle. But we have talked here in B about, you know, zoning in particular along the Route twenty-nine corridor, and I just think we should mention the north side of McCorkle and Montevista.
So staff has-
You can mention those, but it's not-
Staff has no problem bringing tho, those into the, the comment, and that way it'll be there, and then when we're doing the comprehensive review of the direction from the planning commission, what elements of those comments get distilled into the recommendation can be decided.
Well, this is one thing I don't understand, isn't the recommendation, isn't this the planning commission recommendation to the council? Or is it your intention to rewrite what we're recommending? I mean, why, why isn't there a staff report that describes the whole process, all of the material that came in, and here's, here's the planning commission recommendation, and it would be this?
Well, typically, you would provide some analysis regarding it, and that, that, if the commission directs staff to do it that way, no problem, but-
Okay.
Typically, you would provide some analysis fleshing out the issues, what the, the possibility, the possible implications of making these changes would be, those types of things.
But isn't all of that, and again, you know, I feel like we're talking in circles, but it's all moot, because we're still waiting on an EIR.
Well, and, and-
So, so this letter isn't going anywhere, and will be modified likely based on-
Potentially, that, that's exactly right.
I shouldn't say likely, that's maybe presumptive, but without, without the foundational EIR, this is interesting, but it's certainly not complete.
Well, yeah, are you saying that this is the last crack we have at this letter?
It's not, and also the letter, again, was-
Not the letter, I mean, this document, is that, I mean, that's what I thought. This is the last crack before you write something up, I mean, that's, that's not, that-
That would be the goal of staff.
That's what I thought was the goal of staff.
They have a study session on the general plan that they-
So, yeah, so what I'm hearing is that we're saying no, okay, so, if that's the case, I really, I really think, unless you take this reference to George David's letter, that you should include them all. It's either all or none, I mean, doesn't that seem reasonable to them?
I mean, they're all in there anyway, because they're all in the reference.
No, I mean, all on this comment, either they're all in the comment or none in the comment.
But, but that's what I'm trying to get to, is if, and of course, I will add the comments on North McCorkle and Montevista, but then assuming we get additional comments regarding land use and zoning as a comment on the EIR, are we also going to reference those?
Maybe.
Exactly, and so.
It's better to not, I think to Mary's point, I'm very comfortable saying, okay, the, the three areas of discussion, which are, or that should be reviewed in addition to the comprehensive, that in particular, McCorkle, Highway twenty-nine, and what the other one was here, and just say that, that's your recommendation, that, make sure you take a strong, a hard look at these, because they need to be evaluated if we're gonna do a, a truly comprehensive plan, but don't start getting, because we're, we're always getting comments, it's never-ending, and that's the. If you can't, if we keep trying to document this whole series, this was originally just the recap of our reading of the general plan in those study sessions, right?
Then let's not include any. I mean, I have no problem with adding what's, whatever comes up, because that's what comes up. And I think we should acknowledge and, and put into the record whatever comes up. But if the rest of you guys think, no, that's too cumbersome, then we shouldn't pick and choose.
I think there's nothing wrong with pointing out a specific letter that caused us to decide what we decided. I mean, if you look at the discussion under two A, it's full of references to specific letters that we got that caused us to come to the recommendation we came to. So I don't know that I'm in favor of wiping them all out. I mean, when the council gets a stack of letters and everything that they receive, I don't think there's anything wrong with us saying, go look at this in particular, because that's what we're talking about.
Okay, but then we should include all, I think we should include them, yeah. Do we have three people who think that?
I'll, I'll go along with whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, some, most people don't read footnotes, but I certainly hope that the city council at the time reads the footnotes, because that's basically what these letters are. Usually, it is easier to treat it like a ten-year-old's reading it and actually spell it out, but I also know that that's really cumbersome, so. I'm gonna go along with whatever, you guys decide, because at this point, it's not even like this is the final thing, it's just a rough draft, and we're probably gonna add to it.
I, I, my feeling is the main, the main purpose of this B is, is the recommendations we made on the three months of the adoption, within three months of the adoption of the general plan, et cetera, et cetera. What we're talking about now is the comments that are, that the staff has made. And I don't, I don't care either way, I feel like you just say, I don't see what difference it makes if we take George David out, or if we put the other two in. I don't see it makes any difference, as, as long as all that stuff is attached, and that we see it. and that we see it as part of the EIR. And I think that's where we need to see all this stuff. And I think the answers to that are probably more important than sitting here looking at something that we put together a long time ago.
I have a question though about the process. Because what I think I heard you say is that, okay, I assume you're going to add those two because I think we've decided. So then, then you're going to take this and then you're going to summarize it and then you're going to make recommendations? You said staff would make analysis, do an analysis and make recommendations. I thought I heard you say that.
The recommendation comes from the Planning Commission. Staff does analysis on the implications of those recommendations.
And then we'll look at the recommendations, Bobby.
Well, whose recommendations? Do we make the recommendations or you make them?
Our recommendations and then they're going to.
They're made in essence.
Well, okay, but you're going to take these and you're going to rewrite it, as we, you know, rewrite it with all the changes and stuff. And then you're going to have an analysis. And then that's it. You'll just have an analysis and that's just how you feel it fits in with this and that.
The City Council will ultimately make these decisions. So our recommendations are here, but I think what, and I understand the rationale is that the comments that have been very carefully crafted here are to give context to the recommendations. But I do believe that context can get overwhelming and start drowning out the list of recommendations. And not unless is more, but certainly if the key points are salient and succinct, I think you'll have a lot more likelihood they'll get adopted. But if every time we have a new plant, a new comment from the public, the public is also going to be commenting at City Council.
That's not what I'm talking, I'm trying to understand the process here.
Okay, so I'll, let me see if I can explain to you. So example, I'm going to give you an example. The deletion of the low-medium density land use. We gave a recommendation. Noah is going to come back to us. Okay, let me finish. Noah's going to come back and say, if you delete this, this is going to happen. If you keep it in here, this is going to happen.
So the analysis is your response to us.
It's not a response. It's supposed to be.
Your analysis to what we just changed.
So if the Planning Commission recommends that the low-medium designation not be incorporated into the general plan, one of the elements of that would be a number of properties would be non-conforming, remain non-conforming. And the issues that were motivated that recommendation from staff to incorporate that would still remain. So that's part of the analysis.
That would be his analysis.
That's going to go to the city.
To the City Council to make their decision yes or no, which to follow the recommendations from the commission or to come up with their own substitution.
Well, it sounds like it's to follow recommendations from the commission or to follow what you guys wanted.
I, the recommendation comes from the Planning Commission. Staff at that point is taken out of the.
But your analysis is essentially, you know, in that case would be saying why, you, what, you know, what might.
He's giving the City Council.
What the context is for making that decision.
Right.
But there are other contexts too, but the context you're, what I, that you're making is.
Opinion as a planning director completely.
Well, what I'm saying though is that you guys recommended putting it in the general plan. So essentially, your analysis sounds like it's going to be in this case. Right. Well, I mean, no, it was.
It's very accusatory.
This is the direction, this is the direction that we see from the Planning Commission to not include that. And so my job is to say, if you do, this is the implications. If you don't, this is the implications.
Right. That's his job.
Well, all I'm saying is that I, maybe I was wrong, but I was under the impression that the staff brought it to us that as something that was, that you agreed should be done. You were recommending that it should be done.
To the Planning Commission.
Yes, okay, that's what I'm saying. So we said, no, we don't agree. So now you're going to say why, so you say, okay, the Planning Commission doesn't agree. But this is why we recommend it essentially. These are some of the things that, you know.
Bobby, I'm going to go on a limb.
Let, Noah.
I understand what you're saying. Staff will not say why it was originally recommended by staff. We will not contradict the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Okay, so you're, so, okay, so those aren't the reasons that you thought it was a good idea? All right.
The reasons why it's a good idea will be put before the council, good idea or a bad idea, will be put before the council in order for them to make a decision. Staff is in no way going to contradict the direction of the commission.
And Bobby, if you feel with the staff report that you think he is, I'm pretty sure that you can email Noah and let everyone know.
I'm just talking right now. I mean, I'm, you know, it doesn't have to be.
So the commission's recommendation is what goes to the council. It's my job to flesh out the implications of that.
But that's an important, that's very important for the public, I think. Also understand is that we are not, we don't write the general plan. We don't approve the general plan. We weigh in on it from a Planning Commission perspective. And it's Noah's job or any future planning director's job to lay out what the risks are of adopting or not adopting. He wouldn't be doing his job if he didn't do that. And so he's not going to change, if we, if we recommended to say, you know what? We shouldn't do a general plan and for another 50 years. And that's what we all stick with.
Well, did we do?
And that's where we go. But I mean, that's a real, we could as a body decide that's what we're going to recommend. And so he would have, it would be his job to say, this is what would be bad about that and this is what would be good about that. But it's the City Council's the decision maker. That's very important to understand.
I know that. But I guess, but I guess our analysis then, the analysis for our recommendation is that there wasn't enough time for it to be vetted. I mean, that's our, that was our whole thing. We weren't saying it's a bad idea or a good idea. We're just saying, hey, it came too late. We didn't have enough time. We need a comprehensive look at the whole city. Right, which is qualitatively different in my mind than your analysis, but whatever. I'm just trying to clarify what's going on.
It should be qualitatively different. And my job is focused on the planning-related elements of the project, whereas you're looking at it in a broader context.
Okay, so you can, then it is part of your job to assert your.
Professional opinion.
As to what would be best.
As to what would be best.
It's more of a providing kind of a cost-benefit analysis is how I would characterize it.
Okay, so of what would be most beneficial? Because, you know, I'm assuming that you thought.
That would be most, not most beneficial because the recommendation stands on its own.
Okay, all right, okay.
But it's the cost benefits associated with each element of it.
All right, thank you. I mean, it's a good conversation. I appreciate it and thank you.
You know, I tend to think that all of these recommendations are on such a general plane that it's hard for me to imagine what kind of analysis there would be.
But that's what you, that's what you're providing. I mean, it's my impression of why there's such detailed comments here. So that it's very clear, the reasoning why and making sure that Noah doesn't overlook any salient points that were brought up and that.
Yeah, I mean, what can the analysis be about the district being in or out?
The low-medium district?
Yeah.
Well, I haven't conducted that analysis, but we could go back to our original discussion when we proposed it and say that a significant portion of the city would remain non-conforming.
What do you mean by that? I don't think we ever saw anything that.
I can look up the meeting, when, the date of the meeting when it was proposed.
He talked about the number of homes.
No. We have a density range of five to 16. And the staff recommendation was to drop it. It doesn't mean that what's there is non-conforming.
It does in some circumstances.
Pardon me?
It does in some circumstances. I'd be happy to look for examples if you feel that you need it, it's needed. But I mean, we're getting so far ahead of ourselves. I'm not really prepared to talk about a theoretical analysis. But it's just, it's my job to, here's the recommendations and here's what will occur based on those recommendations. So one of the things is within three months of adoption of the general plan, well, depending on the number of projects in, what our staffing levels are, one of those could be, well, this will require additional resources for the department to be able to conduct that. I mean, those types of things. It's essentially an implementation plan or how this would be implemented.
Do you also put in what are some of the positive?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah, cost benefit, show both.
Okay, so what, okay, well, it'll be interesting to see what.
All right, so what do we want to do with this? Do we want to take George David out or do we want to put the other two in?
I'd like to just not do anything because there's not.
Leave it be?
Leave it be for right now and we'll come back to it when there's an actual more thorough EIR draft in front of us that has more of the comments. So we stop, I feel like we're spinning our wheels in mud right now.
I think we already decided that there were three of us who wanted, who were okay with making the changes. I thought there were more. He has it down.
Yeah, that's, that's great. That's, there's an up-down on this. He has the changes, but I feel like it's a movable, it's a movable document at this point. Shoot, I could email him tomorrow and be like, you know what? Could you throw this in there and present it at the next meeting? And he probably will. So.
So you're saying now you don't want to. Well, are you still supporting it? Putting all three in?
I just think we're hashing lines and I think at some point, this is simply a.
But are you, are you in favor of that? You said a few minutes ago that you were. That's all I'm asking.
But if we're going to keep bringing this thing back up, if it truly ends and we say, okay, now you have one attachment and this is how these thoughts came into being, then great. But if this is going to be, if we're going to keep, every time someone comes up with a new comment, we have to rewrite it, then no, I'm not.
That's only been going on for 10 years.
Well, are you okay with the changes that Noah already agreed to make tonight that we already agreed a few minutes ago?
I don't think we agreed.
Yes, we did. Did we not?
There appeared to be a moment of agreement that may have evaporated.
To add the two letters or not.
They will, they will be added for the commission to consider in their final review of the document.
That's fine.
That's fine, great.
All right.
But you did make the change in D, right? You changed that language onsite or elsewhere in the city, right?
Yes.
100%.
And we're going to, next time around, you'll put in the our-town comments that we decided on the agriculture.
Yes.
Right.
On E place holder, yes, completely.
So this is a robust Planning Commission.
That might be a matter of opinion, Bobby.
Well, we have robust discussions.
Generally, it sounds like, it sounds like the commission is generally supportive of the summary with minor modifications added again. And those will be brought back for the commission in a comprehensive review of the entire document. Unless the commission feels there's another need for a study session at this point, I can't imagine what would be discussed.
I think we've beat it together.
Everyone wants another study session. I can tell on a Saturday.
So the next step in the process would be for staff to revise the EIR, get that back issued out for public review and comment. That'll be a 45-day time period. That will close. We will receive all the comments. We will provide responses to those comments. And when we break, we will bring back the EIR, the final draft of the general plan, the summary of the recommendations from the Planning Commission for review and action by the Planning Commission to the City Council.
In 2017.
Some, yes, early 2017.
Not to worry.
I just have a question. Is there any way to shorten the process a little or is it just not allowed? You know, right now you are responding to everything you've got, but you have a strong suspicion or you know that we're going to have to go out again?
Actually, we are, we're not going to respond to each individual comment right now because some of them identify places where the EIR is just lacking. So there's no point in providing a response to all these comments when we know that we're going to actually revise the EIR and need to reissue. So some of, so essentially it's kind of a start over for the comment period. Some folks, I'm sure, will just take their comments and refile them again.
Well, I'm wondering if we couldn't just start over now, hold all those comments and reissue.
That's essentially what staff is doing.
Why does it take till?
But well, some of those comments pointed out inadequacies in the EIR itself. So we have to respond to those by revising the document.
Okay, that was essentially my question. Whether you could do that or just jump ahead and acknowledge that stuff was missing and put it in. Okay.
That is one, that is one methodology. However, based on some of the other issues that we're anticipating we may have to deal with, such as litigation, the document needs to be solid. So that could, that is one methodology that could be used. Staff would rather have the document be fully complete and allow folks to comment on it in its entirety versus asking you to vote on a document that's only been modified since addressing responses or by making responses. And also, if there are significant changes to an environmental document, SEQA requires it to go back through the process.
Are we through? Yes.
No.
All right, then we're to the.
So staff wanted to identify that the RFP presentations have been postponed. Unfortunately, the October 19th meeting proposed by staff to review the RFPs is not going to occur. There are too many conflicts with other community events voiced to staff and we felt that that was not going to be the most successful methodology, given all of those concerns and conflicts voiced. So that will be rescheduled. The developers have been notified of that and we're working on setting another time. Also, staff has completed our review of the Hunter EIR and forwarded comments on to Urban Planning Partners. So they are in the process of revising that document to finalize it and get it ready for issuance. I anticipate that happening within 30 to 45 days.
You finished it and then you sent it back to them?
So the process, when an environmental document's written, it's written by a third party, Urban Planning Partners. The environmental determination is the city's to make. That is the city's document. It was drafted by a third-party consultant. However, cities as the lead agency under SEQA make the SEQA determination, the significance determination with regards to impacts. So it is very common for comments from city staff to be made on these documents to essentially personalize it, make it a city document and also to ensure that it identifies all of the concerns that the city staff is aware of that Urban Planning Partners may not be as a consultant.
So you've done all that and now you're sending it back to the council?
It's been sent back to them. I read it every word for word, the entire document. And they are making revisions and I anticipate it being issued within 30 to 45 days for the comment period.
When does it go back to Hunter?
It was part of the process. The 45 days.
Okay, 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 thanks.
Separate from that.
Gender forecast.
Well, I was going to also ask if there's any holiday cancellations needed to occur. So the City Council has canceled both, I'm sorry, they canceled the November 8th City Council meeting because of the election and the secondary meeting because of the Thanksgiving holiday. They are holding their only meeting on November 29th, their only November meeting. Our schedule does not appear to be impacted by the Thanksgiving holiday. However, we have our second meeting on December 20th. So we don't have to decide today, but.
December 20th.
December 20th. So if there are folks who are planning on being gone, and I sent an email asking the commission, just let me know your vacation schedule. Or if we just feel that that's too much of an imposition on the citizenry to be talking about land use decisions so close to holidays. I mean, it's up to the commission. Staff is available. We can have the meeting. So that'll, I'll wait to hear from individual commissioners on that. And then just for the commission and the public's edification, it is tradition to cancel the first meeting of the year. And so we are canceling the January 3rd, 2017 meeting. So there will only be one Planning Commission meeting in January unless a special meeting is needed.
So November is as usual?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. And so just let me know your vacation schedules or holiday schedules.
12/20 is what's up in the air.
I think, I think we ought to really consider doing 12/20. I think there's, there's too many people gone. It would depend on what you were going to have in the agenda.
Okay, so we can look, we can look forward, or we can talk about it as we get closer to the date.
Yeah, I think, as far as I'm concerned anyway, I don't know about anybody else.
Well, unless it's holding up an applicant's project that you've got so much on your desk right now that.
I mean, if we're so busy, we shouldn't cancel a meeting.
The current impending matters and we could look at them next time.
I'll do that for next meeting, yeah. And so we did.
Upsetting an applicant's timeline.
Yes, thank you. We will ensure, you know, we'll talk to folks as we move forward. We do have some fairly significant projects which are reaching, kind of getting to a point where we can bring them forward to the commission. I know November will be a busy month for us. Right now, I don't have anything on my horizon for December, but of course, that'll happen as we get through this month and then get ready for the next. Yeah, so you can see I updated the pending matters. We did receive a comment from a member of the public who was kind of frustrated with the format, I think just given some of the shortened terminology, UP for use permit, those types of things. And I provided a response, just, you know, this is, it's a courtesy to the, to the public as well as the commission to see what's going on. And I work hard to include the addresses more than any descriptor because that way folks know that something is filed on that address and they're free to contact staff if they'd like to learn more, review the file, any of those things. However, I did commit in my response to the member of the public that I would try to expand on the description so people can understand a little bit more about what's, what's being requested.
I thought that was an excellent reply that you made, by the way.
Thank you. And it is worth noting that the Farmstead addition or extension for a hotel was filed. So that is under review. City staff has referred it out to responsible agencies under SEQA as well as internal staff. And we're just beginning the process of that, but that was filed.
Is that on here?
I don't believe this has been updated because it was filed after this update.
Anything else?
Well, yeah, I was going to bring up, I don't know if the rest, if any of you are interested, but I would like sometime in the future, like not next month or anything, to. to review the noise ordinance. I think we've had a lot of letters. I think I have some personal concerns and there are some inconsistencies, and it hasn't been done for a long time, so I would, I would really like to, if you guys are interested in doing that, just review the noise ordinance and see if there need to be any, you know, if you guys think there are any changes that need to happen or how, because the, the town has changed a lot since that ordinance was made, and I, I would like to look at it. So it's a, you know, special interest of mine. So I, I don't know how you guys feel.
I, I would agree with that. I mean, some of these letters we got recently, I went and looked at it and I didn't find it real helpful.
Yeah, the, the permit process and the timing and the permit process is strange.
The permit process and what's in it. I mean, I mean, it, it reads as though you can't unreasonably disturb your neighbor unless we give you a permit to do it. I assume those permits maybe still have some limitations.
We include an agenda, but we don't go to sit and discuss it here.
That's correct. So I would just point out that the staff has a number of assignments from the planning commission we haven't been able to get to yet.
I understand.
Implementation and creation of design guidelines, that's also included in a lawsuit settlement, so that is a priority of staff. Obviously, the comprehensive zoning code update that is going to be required after the general plan, review of the FAR. Staff was intending to tie that to the design guidelines because it's a similar issue from staff's perspective, and so.
I'm thinking 2017 sometime, but you know, I would, I would like to see it on, if, if I have.
I'm fine with putting it on the list so we don't forget about it, but.
I will add it to the list.
I want it on the list, yeah. But thank you, that's all, that's all I was wanting.
Add it to the list.
Anything else? Meeting's adjourned.